This is the beginning of our committee. I'm hoping to be here and figure out the title. Hope to speak with you. And quickly, then I'll talk about the title of the event there is tonight. Claire, as you know, we're directing the decision and the initiative. Restored Justice Coach. We have Arianna Simpson, a recent graduate from Milton High School. And Nina Zokow, over there at the heavy air facility. So our presentation, I believe, evening tonight will take about thirty minutes. Then we'll allow for additional questions. Our forum will conclude promptly tonight at eight thirty. Which time we want to get everyone, especially our staff, back home safely and everyone, whatever they all. Back home safely. And it turns out that we have more to talk about that we didn't get to tonight. Please know that you can always still contact us by an email or phone to let any additional questions that you may have. Or comments. We ask people who do come up to speak and we'll have another table up front here for those of you who are here in person to come up to the microphone. And then the folks online, we welcome you to raise your hand in the Zoom hand raising function to indicate that you would like to speak. And we'll recognize you in order and Stephanie O'Keefe, our communications director, who will be helping moderate tonight. We'll help us go back and forth between the person and Zoom participants. And we ask people to please keep your comments to a maximum of three minutes to allow everybody the opportunity to speak that we got time for. And we also ask everyone to do their best to maintain respectful community this person. So I'd like to turn it over for a moment to Nina Miranda. Dr. Miranda is the chair of our strategic planning committee and she's going to take a couple of minutes to set the context of our strategic plan, which is. Miranda?
Very good. Thank you, Chair Brosester. So as you've heard already, my next forum is going to focus on one of the pillars of our strategic plan. Hopefully, she'll agree. I think we already have this conversation at the end where. But it's important to keep in mind that the pillars come out of the past, which is the goal, which is to provide all students with highly competitive minds. Developmentally appropriate, emotionally safe and equitable balance, stable learning experience. It's time to ensure that each student becomes a productive, caring and contributing member of society. And can achieve the four key variables. That pressure is the house of information obtained beyond the district of rank. I just want you to remember that that is the information for the honorable citizens. And the three, the three pillars are critical and honorable ways for us to be effective. And to remember, also the other thing that's important to remember that we are in the first phase of the plan in our strategic plan. It's a five-year plan from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven. Among the pillars, and it's a little bit, I think, sometimes confused with the thing that we have the pillars. The pillars, you think of them as priorities. And it's not quite like that. The best way to think about it is a little bit of our strategic plan. It's actually the three circles. That if we are moving the needle on the three pillars, then we're going to be able to achieve both the overall goal. And it's also important to know that if there is a theory of action embedded in our strategic plan, and I'll say a little bit more. So if I hear the three strategic pillars, or the way I like to think of it really is that the three circles is personalized learning. Safe and supportive schools and equity in learning. Now, when we think about our theory of action, we are thinking that if we are moving in the right direction across the three concentric circles. We're going to achieve the following outcomes. Remember that. That the outcomes are of individual student goals, keep that in mind, right? We want to make sure that all students experience a robust and academic enrich experience. So we want to make sure that each individual student has a rich experience within our school. We are also interested in the needle in the aggregate. So as a district, we want to make sure we're ranking high. That we, our students in the aggregate are achieving tightly and that that's going to show up in our high stakes testing. So that's the thing. So individual, district level change. And also embedded in our strategic plan is the idea that if we're doing right by all students. We are going to see movement in terms of performance outcomes for young people, for students who have been underachieving historically. And also to be able to fill the opportunity gaps that we have spoken about for many, many years. So that is the idea. That's the theory that's guiding our actions across the district. Now, when we're talking about personalized learning, we've actually held a forum already on personalized learning. And we've been able to see what that is looking like in the classroom, right? We have heard how our educators are taking into account specific strengths, interests and needs of each student. So it's not just going from a deficit perspective. It's really thinking about what is each student bringing and how do we work on that? How do we leverage that to be able to meet the needs of our students, for all students? Now, when it comes to our safe and supportive schools, we also are recognizing that our young people need safety. They need a sense of belonging. So our schools, and if you've been listening to all the site house home presentations. Every single one of our schools has done a beautiful job of explaining how they're creating this environment of safety and belonging. So our schools are actively working to foster a safe, positive, healthy and inclusive whole school learning environment. That is supporting our students with in the areas of development, right? Right? The kinds of things that people are in the process of developing into vehicles we want them to be. And our integrating services that are mine, the many student support initiatives that we have in our district. Again, there is a lot of really rich and great stuff happening, but it's all in the effort to create the same that are seen. And that create belonging for all of our students. Now, tonight, we're going to be hearing about equity and learning, which focuses on creating conditions in which all of our learnings, students. All of our learners, students and adults, so we're not just thinking about the students of all identities and abilities, how their resources are being used. The other piece that I will come in by mentioning is that we're trafficking. So we're folding ourselves accountable to make sure that we're making progress on the three levels that I told you about. I talked about the individual, I talked about the district as an aggregate, right? In the aggregate, that we're seeing the changes that we want. I know that there's many of us that care about where we are in the ranking, right? In the state and across the country, we care about that and we're trying to move the needle in that direction. And early, we want to make sure that we're aware that we have a mission, we've been underperforming. We're recognizing that. So how are we going to make it through today? So that is our strategic plan. Just don't forget that in the first year of five-year plan, lots of work to do over and we're making great gains. To keep that in mind, it's the age of the.
Thank you, Dr. Miranda. Now I'd like to turn it over to Claire.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We're having some slight technical difficulties. Give me two seconds. I think it's coming back. There you go. So again, welcome. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming out. We're really excited to be here this evening. Dr. Miranda, you did a fabulous job outlining the three pillars and the intersectionality of it all. Really hoping that folks will come away with this understanding that when you think about personalized learning, systems and equity in learning. That that really is about educating the whole child and that we are really talking about academic excellence. This title here, academic excellence. All three of those pillars together, people have high academic achievement, that's everyone across the district. So I'm really excited again to be here. Thank you for having me. All right, let's get started. So as we think about equity, the key to more equitable schools is really about deep commitment. I think all of us really know that, but here's the catch. DI work is just one step toward reaching the macro goal of maybe public education more diverse, equitable and inclusive. Reaching that macro goal hinges on effectively carrying out the work at the micro level.
Okay, so equality, as we can see that everyone is getting the same. We see our boxes here, but it's not equal access. And then when you look at equity, everyone is getting what they need. But liberation is really what we want because we want no barriers at all in front of anyone. We want everyone to have equal access, but also when you remove the barriers, everyone actually is liberated. Not just the people who are on the other side of that thing. So what we have here is our equity roadmap. And really thinking about our equity roadmap, it's a journey. It's a continuous journey. And that we start off with adopting an equity mindset and really understanding what that means is you have to commit. Equity is a journey. You have to know that. That has to be embedded. You have to collaborate value in prioritizing inclusivity, frame, culture of self-reflection and new perspective. And really think about what that, what adopting an equity mindset is. I think it's really important that we just try to demystify what equity mindset means and really understanding that we don't want to come from a deficit mindset. But we're really a growth mindset. We think about Carol Dweck and the work that she did around growth mindset. It's really important that we're thinking about you thrive in a challenge and that when you have challenges and or failures, those are springboards for growth. And so that's really important for us to consider. Then when you drive your equity plan, you're thinking about nurture, social and emotional support. Empathize, culturally responsive teaching, build innovative support, supports and challenge, high expectations. We have to always keep in mind that through all this work, we have high expectations, not only of our students, but also of our practitioners. And then we have expand your equity vision. So again, support professional learning opportunities, listen, ongoing feedback and persist positive change through perseverance. And then again, the journey continues. You're constantly reassessing this journey, one through three. And this is kind of like a beginning template of trying to decide, you know, where do we want to go? We know we're starting someplace. I would say right now we are still in the phase of one of adopting an equity mindset with aspects of two and three that are happening. But again, it's a continuous journey. And so again, we talked a little earlier when we first opened up in regards to some of the commitments that the district has made. Specifically in regards to the quality review and equity audit that was done by Cambridge Education, L and P Educational Services. In that we had interviews, there were focus groups. This is again, long before I came, there were virtual school tours and over three thousand surveys. And this is a snapshot of the findings of our curriculum instruction and disproportionality and accountability and culture and then the recommendations. So if we go through them, you'll see under curriculum instruction, we have cultural relevance has been updated in some subject areas. This is some of their findings. Not all the students are taking advantage of higher level AP classes. And then for the recommendations, developing a comprehensive PD plan, develop structures for job embedded PD, curriculum leaders, building leaders, teachers. Leaders to build capacity is really, really important to do this work and continue to revise curriculum with an equity lens. Disproportionality, students with disabilities and African-American Black students receive more in-school and out-of-school suspensions. To disrupt that disproportionality, engage stakeholders to understand the root causes, be strategic about PD and center and deepen embedded UDL practices. Accountability and culture, accountability and monitoring are lacking in some areas. Monitoring of learning and teaching as well as regular evaluation and feedback were found inconsistent. The recommendations around data and equity goals, use student data to inform decisions at all levels. District strategic plan should have equity goals and metrics throughout. District practices should be transparent, implemented with consistency and fidelity and focused on teacher diversification. As we look at curriculum instruction and district actions, you know, we are really pleased that we have a plan that makes sense. The strategic plan is again about educating the whole child. But when we think about the equity pillar as a whole, it really has been part of our late start and our early release plan district wide. So myself and Adina have provided professional development before for our late starts and for our early releases. And so we are definitely embedded in that work. Then as well, one of the recommendations was embedded PD specifically for our district leaders. So we have myself and Adina, our sort of justice coach, have led PD for our leadership, instructional leadership teams, grade level teams and departments. And then as we think about curriculum, we've been doing a continuous review of curriculum across disciplines. At the high school, we have an African-American literature class that was offered this year as a happier course. Next year, it will be offered for a full year. And then Milton will also be offering the AP African-American Studies class next year. As we think about disproportionality in our district actions, you know, we were really pleased. Adina came on before I did in January of twenty twenty-two. And this is through the Desi Grant to address the disproportionality around discipline. And that was really something that I think was really smart of the district to hit that head on. Oftentimes, we are cited for things, but then there isn't a response to it. Professional development, there has been universal design for learning professional development across all levels district wide. And then data analysis, the African-American and Black students with communication disability and disciplinary removals for African-American Black students. With special education has decreased. What's really important about having an understanding of the data is that, you know. Again, I've been talking about Adina Schecter all evening, off and on. I've been kind of singing her praises throughout the district. She has really been out there doing such amazing work and super, super committed to all the children across the district. We're really making sure that this data that we're able to present, that we see results. And so without further ado, Adina Schecter, our sort of practice coach.
Right now, I think that we're taking buyers for a justice. Both our staff, for a justice, a full mindset and what the actions, the relationships, connection and justice at a heart of beauty. One thing that stood out to me when Claire was talking about functionality, one five years ago. And we were looking into what the equity audit said about, well, why it happened. You know, I went to all the schools, I really wanted to know all the students who were at that. Were like students who had been suspended, students who were at risk for anything that could happen. Kids were in public learning because they were getting. And so I really tried to be in the school and partner with, I partnered with guidance counselors, justice counselors, some principals. And we are just now in every school, a real team in like figuring out how to make sure that every kid is in the classroom learning. And if they, if they make mistakes, like all kids do, then we now have a process in place. We have a flexible set of practices that we are using to resolve conflicts, to help kids really express their unmet needs. Because I think that's a language we use a lot is who are acting out of an unmet need and we need to understand what that is and address it. And I just, I do think how to stand up here a year later and to say, we have, we really have some good things in place. Funny, David S. Two is an expert in this work, talks about how restorative justice is often only considered a reactive response to harm. But it's all, but really it's a proactive relational strategy to create a culture of connectivity for all members of community thrive and feel valued. I think we all do believe in the schools that every single kid should feel valued. And if a kid is acting out, most likely they need some help in figuring out how to contribute to their school community. And so restorative justice is one way. I think we've been able to reengage a lot of those students. This is a very important new aspect of Massachusetts law. So I want to make sure that everyone here knows that on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the Department of Education revised state law to say that a student shall not be suspended or expelled until, quote. Alternative remedy have been employed and their use and results documented. Alternative remedies might include mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice and collaborative problem solving. We are allowed to suspend a student if the student is unsafe to the school committed, school community for a specific documentable reason. But last year, especially in the middle of the high school, if you look at the reasons for suspension, a lot of them were not because of unsafe, anything that was unsafe. It was because of students who were disruptive to the learning community in some way. Or maybe they, you know, broke some rule, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they were unsafe to be in school. For students where we feel that it is unsafe, we absolutely will remove a student and the law says we can do so. But this is right now, I am doing work with the teachers, all the staff at especially Pierce and Milton High. To figure out how we're going to document these remedies now and the use of Power School, our new learning management system is going to help us do this. So I'm also working, one thing that's been great about my position is I feel like I have access to a lot of people at central office. So I can think about how to collect data and how to do things at a policy at a district level. But also really I'm in the classrooms with the kids, helping the teachers in the moment. I am a classroom teacher. That was what, that's been my whole career. I still consider myself in the classroom with the kids most of the time, figuring out how to keep them there and learning. So my position is funded by the State of Education, Department of Education, and there is an action plan. We are accountable as a district to that action plan. These are all the different aspects of the work that I do that is in that action plan. So as I mentioned earlier with the quote about proactive circles or that this is a proactive strategy. So part of what I do for kids who are having a hard time is that I have proactive ways of having them in weekly circles during flex time for peers. So during advisory for the high school. And we use that time to come together, build a community of trust so that when things come up, conflict between teachers or peers. There's actually a place where they could proactively work out all of those things together, so it doesn't escalate into a bigger conflict. Then when using a restorative circle, when a conflict comes up, they've already used the circle process in a way that has built trust in community and they believe in it. So then when a conflict comes up, we need it to repair. Last year, I started by leaving all these circles on the ground. But then I realized that, you know, I really wanted to get to know some seniors at the high school and figure out, hey, I would love to have them start leading these with me. I would love for students to take a bigger role. And I was very lucky to meet Ariana Simpson, who I met and we talked for, I think, an hour when we first met because she was so passionate to do this work. And she just jumped on board. So during her senior privilege, which is a time the seniors get to do anything they need to do. I don't know, how do you use that time? Work, community service. I said, how about we use that time for you to come to Pierce with me and help lead the circle? And so Ariana and another student from the high school would come every week, help me lead the circle. And now she's really leading the circles in the high school. And she's really taken in and ownership of it. And so I invited her here to talk a little bit about the work. That's not you.
My voice is loud enough. I feel really grateful to be here and I'm going to try and to figure my point. Because there's a lot that I do want to say and I feel like I'm one person standing up here, but I feel like I wish I had an auditorium full of like every student in this district. Because I would love to be like filling value. That is something that I cannot possess enough. I wish I could put myself into learning pieces and distribute myself to every student in the town of Milton. Because they need our help, they need our love, they need our support and they need to feel like they're heard and their voice is heard. And so with these circles, you know, I've been in this town my whole entire life. So growing up in it and seeing some things, you can see how the system works and now to be outside of it, standing for yourself, to make those choices. It all makes sense now to a wider extent. So with being able to talk with the students that I do each day, it empowers me to not only learn them, but to also learn more from myself. So I can better help them and not just kind of shove an answer in their face to just satisfy them, but to say, you know what? I don't know the answer. I'm going to go figure it out. You know, I've gotten walked away from, teachers may not want to tell me the answers, but I try and figure it out for them. So I am so happy that I met Claire and Adina because I've always wanted to do this. So now that I finally get to be able to walk beside them and see them for myself, that's amazing. There's a lot of wonderful things that we get to talk to and the stories they share, they're heartening, but they're the truth and they're raw and they're uncut. But that's what we need to hear and we need people like you to really support us and that is what I'm saying. Because we have a wonderful system, but we need better help when it comes to feeling, making students feel like they're heard and that they're valued here and not inside them. But that's what I'm saying.
And, you know, young woman of color, but she's so committed to her hometown that she's willing to come back. She could have walked away, but she said, you know what? I want to come back and I want to continue to do this work and she's willing to learn. She's a college student, so she is doing this on her free time, but she could be doing other things that young college students do. But she's coming back and giving back. So that's, you know, we talk about servant leadership. That's it right there.
Okay, just to wrap up sort of what's in the action plan. I also lead professional development. As Claire mentioned earlier, I've been able to lead PD on restorative justice now at staff meetings, grade level meetings, curriculum meetings. But I do offer after-school more intensive courses for teachers. And that has been, I've added another course. There's now part one and part two this year, so we're building on that. A big project I'm working on with Pierce and Milton High right now is doing some handbook revisions that align with the new law. So how are we going to document? What actions and behaviors do we know students will do throughout the year? And what are the responses? What are the responses the first time? What are the responses the second time? What are the responses the third time? And to get very clear on what that flexible set of responses is, because it's not, restorative justice is not always this happens and then you do this. A lot of it depends on what is happening in the context. And I think that we are going to continue to meet. I have focus groups and different opportunities. I'm getting every teacher in both schools to have a voice and a say in what the handbook looks like. Because I wanted to really live and breathe in the schools in a real way. And one-on-one coaching, I mean, that's really what I do most of the day. I'm with teachers, I'm with leaders, I'm with counselors. We are figuring out conflicts in the moment and we are figuring out how to make sure that, you know, we don't let anything slide, right? If a kid is harmed, we want to figure out how to make things right and how to repair. So that is snapshot of the work that's happening. And I really do have to say that at this point, we have a huge reduction in suspensions this year already. So. Thank you.
Phrases. Adina again has really been committed on the works that she has done with that handbook. And she started that before I came on board and she has really, really just stuck it out. It's not easy. I mean, our teachers are overwhelmed, they overwork, our administrators are overwhelmed and overworked. This is every day. It's a challenge, but she's been getting in there and really wanting to make sure that our practitioners are really being heard, our administrators. This is, this is different work. I mean, things are shifting, the landscape has shifted and it's something that we have to start to understand. But when we think about that strategic plan, personalized learning, safe and supportive schools and equity, this is what it's all about. It's really about, again, shifting that mindset, really coming, getting away from a deficit and really thinking about a growth mindset. And having the will to want to learn with people. And I think Adina has really led this work with that handbook, really, really, really getting in with you. It's not easy sometimes to go to the some of those meetings, not understanding why they have to be part of the process, but wanting to be part of the process and really shifting. but wanting to be part of the process and really shifting our thinking. We don't want disruptions in our classrooms. We want, again, this is a district where, you know, academic achievement and academic excellence is really what we're about. But we have to make sure we're not leaving anyone behind as we are on that journey doing it. So, and again, Adina, I thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing. So as we think about learning loss versus learning opportunities, we've, we've thought, we've talked a lot about this, you know? We've talked a lot about the pandemic and there's, again, there's been a shift in the landscape. We know there's been, we, we know there's been some changes. But really, again, thinking about our strategic plan, that all three pillars are really rooted in, in educating the whole child. Thinking about data analysis, the district has made a huge commitment to data wise. We're really proud of the work that we're doing with that and that all of our district leaders are participating in this PD that's really focused on clearly formulating learning targets for all students. And I, I think once we start to really understand that, if we can nail down exactly what students need, we'll be able to move forward. It's, it's a marathon. It's not a sprint. I was hoping that through the pandemic, we would have kind of got that through. We would all kind of embrace that concept that we don't have to rush. That we want to have a sense of urgency, but we have to have a sense of urgency with the appropriate pace. We want to make sure that we're not leaving anyone behind. We know that standards-based instruction is incredibly important. We know what standards children need to have to move on in the trajectory. We need to slow it down sometimes, just to make sure, we need to make sure it's personalized. We need to make sure everyone has the, the, the mental health and well-being to actually be able to attend in class. And then we want to also think about equity length as we're doing it. If we can do that, I think we'll be on the right track. When we think about mindset, again, it's about ensuring that students' experiences are centered on activities that are personalized and promote that growth mindset and that academic achievement for all students will be really, really something that we won't even have to be able to question. I think oftentimes we'll question the academic achievement and academic excellence when we think about these three pillars. But the really, that's what those three pillars would actually mean if we, if we're doing it all together succinctly. The next section that we're going to go into is the accountability that was in, in culture and the district actions. So if we think about the data review, we have set metrics team goals that are really important for us to set and to constantly be reviewing. School improvement plans are aligned to our strategic plan with equity as a through line. It's really important as we think about, each school has its own community, each school has its own set of data, but we are a district. So it's really important that all of our data is aligned, all of our data action steps are aligned to our strategic plan. And that's what our school improvement plans are showing. And then as we think about teacher diversification, which was outlined in our quality review, there's certain things that we know, we, we need to provide windows, we need to provide mirrors. That's incredibly important for all of our students. It's actually really important for our practitioners as well to see themselves. So we're really proud of the work that we're doing with Mass Association of Superintendents, the racial equity, diversity and inclusion, myself and Garth are participating in that professional development. And then we have the Center for Strategic Initiatives, Professional Development that we're participating in. And this professional development is year-long. Garth and I have spent a, a great deal of time together. I really want to commend his commitment. Much of this work is typically done with the superintendent and the directors of Equity Inclusion across the state. He has jumped right in as we have been transitioning throughout this year. And just really willing to kind of take the bull by the horn to say, you know, I'll jump in, I'll do the work with you and really have an understanding of exactly what it means to have a commitment to equity and what teacher diversification actually looks like. So in part of those meetings that we have, we have four sessions that we are meeting with Mass Ready. And then we also have what we call the Superintendent and DEI Partnership Professional Learning Community. And that is a bimonthly sessions that Garth and I participate in. We have a larger community, it's not really large, it's probably about ten to fifteen people. But then we have one-on-one coaching where we have coaching together and we also have individual coaching. And it's incredibly important that we do this work because, you know, to, you know, it's great to have a position to say we have a Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging, but if we don't have a partner in our central office with our superintendent, it makes it really difficult to lead this work in the district. He's been very, very committed. So Garth, I thank you very much. Give him a hand for his will to want to do this work. And then I think about some of our other partnerships that we have. We are involved with an organization, Mass Partnership for Diversity in Education, MPDE. And we are also partnering now with another organization, today's students, tomorrow's teachers. And we received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the state to begin to create our own pipeline of, of, of teachers. And we talk about windows, we talk about mirrors. The only way that I think we can really start to, to work on it ourselves is what can we do? We've had a future teacher program for some time in Milton, but with this partnership with MPDE as well as today's students, tomorrow's teachers, we're able to create our own. We will, in this program, what we will do is we will create a cohort in ninth grade. And that cohort will move all the way up through college. So we will have X amount of ninth graders. We're trying to figure out how many we're actually going to have. We will have coaching for them. They'll have opportunities. We're professionals, so we're actually in the field and then move through tenth grade, eleventh grade and twelfth grade. They go off to college, hoping that they will major in education and they'll be able to come back and work in Milton or one of the other cohort districts. So this Randolph is involved with this, Sharon Public Schools is involved and a few other schools. Not every school, district received the grant. I'm really fortunate that we were able to qualify for it. And so I think it's an exciting opportunity and prospect for us to, again, be thinking outside the box and creating our own pipeline of students, you know? If you think about young students like Ariana, this would have been a wonderful opportunity had we had this opportunity when she was in school, this might have been something that she would have participated in. And so we want to make sure that we get students early on that they can be part of this process. Oops, and I'm sorry. I also wanted to give you an update on our data in regards to our work this year around teacher diversification. I know Vivee, she presented our goals for our teacher diversification data. And it was, I think, nine point two, I'm sorry, ten percent of our teachers are teachers of color with thirty percent of our students of color. And we were hoping that we, our goal would be twenty percent, which is technically one teacher annually. And I'm pleased to be able to say that we, we just, we looked at our numbers. We have hired three teachers of color, five paraprofessionals and twenty-five other support staff across the district this year for a total of thirty-three. So we are making some, we've kind of gone beyond our goal of, of twenty percent. But we are, we're making, I would say, small and large gains. So, you know, it's, it's great to see that we have our support staff. I'm really happy though to really be able to say that we have three teachers and the five paraprofessionals. I think that's a huge commitment of, of the district and we just have to keep at it. And we, we talk a lot about hiring, but it's also about making sure that we can retain teachers of color. And a lot of that is, again, about this work around belonging and making sure that you feel valued and you feel heard and that you are part of the community. All right, this next slide, this is from the Milton Coalition, Coalition. And some of this data has been, you know, it's, it's, the data doesn't lie. And I think we have to, you know, look at this and we have twenty-five percent of our students at the high school who feels that they've been treated poorly due to race and ethnicity. We have nineteen percent of our students who feels that they've been treated poorly because of the sexual orientation. This is some of the work that we really have to do and focus on. We want to make sure that all of our students feel like they belong. What we're doing right now, again, we have our restorative justice, doing proactive cir, coaching, proactive circles. I also want to say some of these circles, you know, they've been circles, but there also have, some of them have been what I, what I would call affinity groups. So we've, there's a lot of the work that Adina's been doing, but some of the work that Ariana has been doing has really been about affinity groups. Really allowing for a platform and a space for students to be able to really be honest and transparent about their experience. Where it's not, we're, we're not necessarily talking about conflict and resolution. This is happening at the high school where we have high school students who are mentoring students at Pierce and Tucker. Again, our recent graduate, we have Ariana who's been doing this work at Pierce. And then we also have a, a young women's group that's led by Mary Bianca, one of our school adjustment counselors in the afternoons at the high school. What we need to start working on, we're looking at our next steps and then we're really trying to figure out what can we do about scheduling. We realize that we have to prioritize time in the day. It is very difficult to get young people to stay off the school. And we realize that if we're going to truly be committed to this work, if we really believe in our strategic plan, that this is something that should be embedded during the day. So we need to think about being more creative with our, with our scheduling. And this is something that we've talked to Karen Cahill about. Karen, are you there? I'm not sure if she's there. Can we hear you?
Can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you either. Just thought we'd give it a try. But Karen has been a great partner in trying to figure out how do we do this. It is tricky. We have a schedule. There's a certain amount of time that we have to have for teaching and learning during the day. But I want to emphasize that this equity work and this work around affinity groups is part of our learning. And so we, we, this cannot be considered something extra. This is something that has to be embedded during the day for our students to feel welcome. And, you know, so we need to continue to do these restorative circles that, that are proactive. And it needs, it really needs to be something that is expanded beyond just our disproportionality students. And I think this is something that we've, Adina and I've been talking about, we've been talking about with administration and really all of our building leaders too. The work has been so powerful that we've been able to do, that this is something that we need to expand. And then it can't just be about our at-risk students because many of our students who are not identified are at risk. We just don't know it yet. And so some of this is really going to be helpful for them. Really proud of what Adina's been able to do. She's going to be piloting a two-week restorative justice class for sixth graders, which I think is going to be incredibly powerful. I know Karen was going to share, we've had just recently, we had students from the high school who shared a presentation at the middle school. There's part of our LGBTQ plus community where these students came and, and shared and did a workshop with our sixth and seventh graders, which was amazing. And so it was well-received and just really proud that the students felt like they were able to do that, that they had a voice. They were able to go to the cringe and say, this is something that I want to share. You know, it was, it was something that they were able to work on together and then present at the middle school. And this is something that they've done.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, with the technical difficulties we've had, I think.
Thanks for asking. And so we're, we're really proud of, of the, the students, you know? Often students don't feel valued and don't feel like they have a voice. So it's really nice that they, that this, the student was able to actually go well-received, wasn't told no, let's see what we can do. And then again, the support that was there for that particular student. And so that was, that's fabulous. And that leads us into our next piece and we are really fortunate to have one of our parents from CaliPod, Nina. Nina Zokopovacun.
Hi, everyone. So I am the co-chair for the CaliPod Diversity Equity Belonging Committee. And the belonging is particularly where I want to focus today. So in December, December thirteenth, there was the elementary district-wide event led by two facilitators from DEI, the state school program for LGBTQ plus students. Jeff Paradi and Lyndon Callahan. In the past, staff, a number of which population of staff in the district, I think, at least at the elementary level, Jeff Paradi had done a training several years ago. And this past spring, when our DEI committee met, we really saw an opportunity to learn together, the community, and particularly as families. The fam, the family community members that are on the DEI committee at CaliPod really wanted to come together about an issue that is a national topic. It's come up a lot in other school districts and a lot of national news, but we wanted to ensure that our students in Milton feel like they can belong at school and feel like they are loved and are around, and like they really get their needs met. So we wanted to make sure that, that the families and the community around them have the information that the staff are getting as well. So after we met, we met a few times in the spring, the event was not the right time as the end of the school year approached. So in the fall and as Claire joined, joined us, we really thought more about what an event could be and who, what should be targeted for. And because students at the elementary level eventually go on to the school at head school level, but they also learn mindsets and practices at the elementary level, we feel really responsible. Talking about we at CaliPod, that's my experience, but we know that the elementary level, we're responsible for shaping students and children's beliefs and in a way that they feel welcome at school. So we wanted to invite these facilitators in and let them provide information to families on gender and identity and inclusion so that families would get the same information as the staff had gotten. But it's just a piece of it. We knew that this was just the beginning of a conversation. We know that there's more to go. We're already talking in our DEI community about what the next steps would look like, what the intersection between race, class and gender identity. We, we know that there's a lot more to go, but we wanted this to be a family-led conversation. You know, the schools are doing so much. And we really appreciate that they have a lot to take on, but we also want the community around our students to support them. So that's how we got this done.
Thank you so much. And I, I think what's really important to, to communicate is that, you know, this was a community event that was in the evening. It wasn't during school, but it really did provide people an opportunity to share their experiences. We had a community member from Milton who shared the experience of their, of their child transitioning. We had another community member who wasn't from our community, but a, a, a parent who shared their experience. But what it allowed for were for parents who are in the community, who are actually going through some of these transitions with their own children to have a safe place and a platform to talk about it. Wasn't during the school day. This wasn't something that was going to be disrupting any kind of teaching and learning. But, you know, it's really important for, for families to know that the schools are there to support them. And so I think that was just such a wonderful event. We had families who really shared some personal stories and really thankful that their children can come to school and are welcome because of what we are doing in our schools to ensure that everyone feels as though they belong. And I think at the elementary level, to, to see families be able to share those experiences was really, really, really powerful. And I just want to thank Nina because she was very instrumental in, in helping to plan that event. We had eighty-four families register. We had about, I think, a little over fifty people who actually participated. Lots of positive feedback. And so just really glad that we were able to support that event and support the families in the community with this, with this topic. And they did, I think Jeff Paradi and Lyndon did a fabulous job in facilitating. And I also want to give a big shout because she's part of the Nellie May Foundation, that's where she, that's her, that's her day job. Although did the EIC work that she's been doing at CaliPod has, has taken up a lot of her time. But she nominated us for a, a grant, so we receive the ten thousand dollar grant, thanks to Nina facilitate some of the work. This, it's not easy to, to do this work. There was a financial commitment that you need to have. I'm Office of One, I, I'm stealing Adina from other resources most of the time. And so it, it's great that we're able to, to get this money to be able to do some great professional development with our teachers in, in the district. So we're really, really excited about that. And so you have, so I want to thank you. If you have more questions, you can always reach me at this particularly email. It's deibatmiltonps.org and we will open it up for questions. Thank you.
So we were still wrestling with some of our technical issues tonight. And sound for our remote participants is still a challenge for us. And, and so what I've been advised, are we still on? And, and so what I've been advised, are we still on to that Shane? Yeah, yeah. Right, right. That was, that was the suggestion. It's just. Yeah, we could give that a try. Janet, Janet Sheen, are you there? Or Karen Cahill? Anyone?
Yes, I am here.
We can, we can hear them.
Oh, good.
That's great.
Oh, there are two of me, unfortunately.
I can't hear enough.
Okay. Okay. This is, this is now the opportunity for, for community to, if folks would like to comment or have questions, we have people online and we have people in person. And Stephanie is going to help us moderate in terms of which, which people will get called, either in person or remotely. How about if we start with in-person? Yeah, yeah. Sure. Sure, that sounds great. That sounds great. So why don't we, the first person who would like to speak, why don't you come on up? If you could please introduce yourself and tell us your address. Yeah, just, yeah, why don't you go ahead?
I have is, who is accountable and how are we holding folks accountable? Specifically, I'm curious to know with the new superintendent coming on board, what are some of the equity goals that that superintendent will have in their own, like, you know, evaluation plan? What are we thinking about that? And then who else beyond Claire and Adina are being measured on equity? Across the district in terms of principals and teachers, where are those measures and those assessments?
Great question. Thank you, Meg.
Thank you.
Anybody like to respond?
Well, I could respond just again, Adina and I, we, you know, I'm Officer One. I'm actually, I say that Adina's part of my office because, you know, restorative practice work and justice work is so closely aligned to our equity work. I would say in regards to accountability and really measuring that, that the school improvement plans are really important. You know, as, as a leadership, we are going through those plans, making sure that all of the equity goals that are outlined in each individual schools is really closely aligned with the strategic plan. And we are measuring those goals. So there are SMART goals that are built into those plans and we are looking at that. We are constantly looking at the goals that were laid out in our metrics and just making sure that we are, where we are moving the needle. Again, it's a marathon. It's not going to be a sprint. It is going to take time, but we have to be intentional. So when you talk about accountability, it's really about being intentional and making sure that we are constantly reviewing our data and making the shifts where we need to necessarily. When we see things that are happening, we need to act on it. And if we don't see improvement, then we need to make a shift. Think about that equity roadmap, it's like the mindset and you're driving it. You have to then also be able to reassess and switch practices if it's not working. Like in, in regards to Dr. Barlow's, he'll be coming on. I mean, there were some equity questions that were built into his, through his interview in that process, but I think the school committee will be able to speak more to, you know, what will be embedded in the expectations about equity.
Thank you, Claire. Yes, and that, that will certainly be, you know, every year the superintendent has to set goals. And those goals, I think what we're, what we're talking about after our new superintendent arrives in July, that there will be a leadership team retreat sometime in July where they'll set some goals for the district. Then the school committee will have a retreat in August where we'll also set some goals. And these are all goals that we all should be evaluated by. At the, and then in early fall, the superintendent will, you know, clearly articulate what his goals are for the year. So there's, there's that sort of process being set up right now. But I think Claire was, was really correct in talking about the school improvement plans. And all year long, we've had the different site councils from all, all six of our schools come and report. And it really has been heartwarming to us to see how aligned we all are along the pillars of the strategic plan. And they are really looking at the data relative to each of the goals and, and are reviewing that data amongst themselves and holding, holding all of them accountable for the achievement that we're, we're looking to reach. I don't know if anybody else has anything for the comments.
I think the only thing I would add is that we have also, as part of the strategic planning process, been reflecting on creating more intentional alignment, if you will. The data is there. So we have been developing a dashboard of the data tracking that we will be doing to hold ourselves accountable to progress against the plan. But perhaps what we haven't done as, as clearly as we can, and we've been discussing this, is sort of creating that through line. So that it becomes very clear in terms of those metrics that we will be keeping an eye on to make sure that, you know, that theory of action that's embedded in the plan, it's working. And if not, then we're going to have to look at it and be like, all right, every assumption or some of the assumptions are not quite right. We have to go back to it. That's all the, the idea of a strategic plan is having to put a stake in the ground, say, this is what we're going to do. And then see if we start moving the needle in the direction that we want to. And if not, we can go back. So we are thinking of sort of more intentional alignment, if you will. It's there. And you see it sort of embedded in every plan. And that's one of the things that I've been heartened about is that every, every school has presented their plan and every school leader is holding themselves accountable to make sure that they're moving, moving the pieces in the direction based on the framework that we have set for ourselves as a district.
From a financial point of view, Claire met with the school finance subcommittee and presented requests for additional needs in her department. And we have continued to discuss those with her. Right now, they include an addition, a coaching position to spread out in all the schools and also stipends for identified teacher leaders in each of the schools and money for materials of professional development and conferences that we would like to send our staff to. So the school committee voted on that budget, including those additions. And we voted that two weeks ago. And so we now are going before the warrant committee Tuesday evening. And then we go from there to discussions with the town administrator and then down to town meetings. So we're, we're hoping that some of those positions that Claire's asking for and that we agree that we need will be included in our budget.
Okay. Hi, I'm going to be really quick. My name is Erin Hardy. I have three kids in the district. I'm a parent of public school students. And I just want to echo what, what Meg said. I just feel really, really hopeful and really, really appreciative. I've been involved with others, other parents in the town for, you know, I've lived in the town for ten years. And a reason I moved to Milton is that I wanted to be part of a community that really just loved its diversity and understood that equity and excellence are one and the same. And for us to get better and to be a leader in this state, in this state as a leader in the country, that we have to walk the walk. And I appreciate your comment about accountability, Meg, but I also feel this shifting and I'm very hopeful about it. Where in addition to accountability, there really feels like this teamwork and this investment, right? We've got the school committee, we've got parents, we've got staff at all different levels, we've got people from all different buildings, we've got former students. And that's really what it's going to take for us to be able to fulfill this vision that we have for our kids and for our community in addition to the accountability. So I think my question is mostly about how we as a community of parents and different coalitions in the town can support this work. We have a lot coming up on the horizon with budgets, with pending overrides. And how do we help as parents to support this work? And also to make the comment that you've done an enormous amount of work with the resources that you have, which are very, very stretched. So like to be able to help make the case to people in the community to see how much you've leveraged and gotten such an incredible return on the investments that have already been made, which can be expanded upon. So just, that's a question that I think a lot of people are ready and willing and interested to help support this work and do what we can as community and coalition members.
Thank you.
There, that while there might be differing views across the town, that there are people who value this work. And what really matters is the vote at the warrant committee and then ultimately town meeting. So for those of you, whether you're a town meeting member or you have a neighbor that is, please reach out to them and encourage them to support this work because it's their vote that's going to make Claire's work, our entire community's work, a reality. So thank you all for coming.
Sure, sure.
I'm so glad you got the technology to work. And thanks for your patience. And, and you know, like everybody.
Tell us your name.
Kelly Lawson. And 432 Elliot Street. I have two boys in the Milton Public School. So like the people who've spoken before, I'm incredibly impressed with the work. I'm a big believer in inclusion and equity. I think it's critically important. I think one of the things, the thing I wanted to raise tonight though, is change is really important and I think it's critical. But I also, in terms of, I'm curious what the student voice is having and hearing from Adriana would so help hook me. But how they can make sure we have their social and emotional growth included in that. There was something disturbing that happened in the last week, I would say, that I wanted to raise to the board. I didn't know if they were aware. There was a, called a loss of credit policy that was added to the Milton High School handbook. And it was a situation basically where if you miss a certain number, you're absent a certain number of days. Then, I mean, there's, there's a process for it. But, and the appeal process is seven days, which is fairly short. If you miss a certain amount, then you're going to lose, the student will lose the credit. And what really, there's several things about that that disturbed me and I think are really inconsistent with the principles that we were talking about today. With restorative justice, with, I think, a lot of the students who would fall within that would be the most vulnerable students. I mean, let's face it, most of the people here, if their kids were in that situation, they would be calling the school. They would be standing up. They would be telling their kids to do the same thing. I think there were kids, maybe they're missing or they're absent for a variety of reasons. Maybe they're taking siblings to school, dropping them off, et cetera, to have this blanket policy and to have this mass email going out to parents without really explanations and to have an assembly in the high school to talk to students about this. And to say things like, I don't care if you've got an A in this class, if you miss this, you are still going to lose your credit. It will be noted on your transcript. That is really undermining, I think, the social and emotional health of our students. And what I found very problematic about the policy from a legal perspective was it talked, it actually had expressed language in it that said, whether excused or unexcused, these absences count towards this lost credit policy. You may have students who may have situations, and again, may not be in a situation, who knows, their parents may not even be in a situation where they understand the documents that are being sent home about this. And that, to me, I have a hard time seeing how that doesn't violate with the American with Disabilities Act. So these types of amendments that may be being made to this, this Milton High School policy, I think it's great. Everything we can do about equity and inclusion and social, emotional wellbeing is so important. But to, to put a punitive, very punitive cost and have additional anxiety for children that they could potentially lose credit and have these things because they may be absent. It may be medical issues the school's not aware of. And I understand there were supposed to be ways of which it was being sent out or not sent out. I also know that those were not, they did not go through smoothly with the technology. It did not work as appropriately as it was supposed to. And I believe that the educators were very responsive when parents reached out about it. But the point is, they shouldn't have to. This is not a policy that we should be placing on our children. These kinds of things have to be thought about. Like, we're talking about, we've, we've been educated, we've been trained. So how are we going to implement the inclusion? And that, I, I think it's great about all the education we've done. But I guess I'd like to hear more about how are we really hearing from our students and how they can be brought into this conversation? As Ariana was wonderful. I mean, it's so impressive. Like, it's so great to see our youth acting this way and being so empowered and engaged. But how do we get others who maybe don't have that self-motivation to be able to speak up about things that concern them?
But I do want to say, I think from my perspective and just going through the system, there's a huge disconnect. And I think something that I wanted to verbalize earlier, but it didn't come to mind was, we're all learning here. And I think a quote that I abide by, and I tell my girls every day, I go into the room and the boys, be comfortable to be uncomfortable because you know, grow with something. And I think for me, growing up, having to be a mother for myself in the sense, and trying to figure this out and know what things mean and translate. You know, I'm setting law right now. So I hope, believe one day can come back and, you know, be able to, to be a support and to be one of those people to the younger students. But I think there's a disconnect from in this building and then the buildings of Milton High School and other schools around us, such as the elementary schools and the middle schools. And I think we do a lot of talk, but we necessarily don't do the walk. And I think students are starting to feel like the impact of being uncomfortable, not wanting to go to school. I cannot tell you how many times. And I have to speak for them, and I'm sorry to say this, but I go into school and students say, I don't want to be here. I don't want to be here. You know, I was telling the girls, you know, there's an emphasis on the physicality of it, now having to do the makeup and the hair and all those things, and all those are beautiful things. It's, there's a disconnect of why I am here. There's no classes. Well, I want to know how to save my money, to invest. We go through school, we have to sign out a loan. Why is my parents letting me sign out a loan? I have no knowledge. We go through school, we have to sign out a loan. Why is my parents letting me sign out a loan? And I have no knowledge about that. You know, we mentioned earlier about these classes, about having knowledge regarding our history and really knowing the truth and the uncomfortable truth. And I think there's also uncomfortability within teachers as well. It's not necessarily the students. So it's also having, from a teacher's perspective and those of higher power, understanding that those teachings that you've learned in the past, you have to reiterate them so that they're conducive and prevalent to now, so that can be beneficial. And if you keep abiding by things, I know we can, we can bring this back far beyond, but we need to see what is in front of us and we need to be, we have to have the want to do that. And I think as far as holding accountability, it's, yeah, holding the students accountable, it's gaining feedback from the students. Asking them, being vulnerable to our students too, because there's this level of, I'm your teacher and I'm your student. And that's, that's, there's no growth in that. And I think taking a step back and as teachers, as parents, just saying, how are you doing today? What can I do to help you? You know what? Maybe I don't understand. And I think as a student, I put a huge emphasis on learning. And even if I know, I don't know. You know what I mean? And I think I just want to say that because as administrators, it's important for us to just take a huge step back and realize why we're doing this. And forget our job title for a second, especially in the world and how life is moving as a whole. So I feel privileged to be on this front.
Can you, can you hear me? Oh, okay. So I don't think Mrs. Cahill is still on the Zoom. And I, I don't think it's right that I, I speak for her, but I, I do, I do think that she would be fine with me saying that she will, will, will certainly be very interested in the feedback on this topic, on this policy. I'm not really sure which policy our speaker was just referring to. I do want to thank Ariana for her comments. And I will say that we will take a look at that. After the assembly a week ago, I would just like, like you to know that we received some excellent feedback from our students and parents. And Mrs. Cahill was certainly listening and we will certainly take a look at that. So thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name's Renee Wilkinson. I have an elementary school student here in Milton. And there's definitely a thread that I'm hearing at this point in the conversation, which is around student voice. And that's where my question lies. And so I know earlier in the conversation, there were notes about handbook edits. And it sounded like some of that work is happening with teachers and administrators and many of those good folks. But wanted to make sure that there's opportunities for students to have input into whatever getting their feedback around edits looks like. It's really important for that work to happen. I think the edits are coming for middle school and high school handbooks, but I also have curiosities if those edits are coming to elementary school handbooks. And also just in general, a lot of programming does seem, at least from like portions that I heard in the presentation, there's a lot of middle and high school emphasis, but want to make sure that that's also being relevant and accessible for elementary school students as well. And there was one slide that showed some statistics that were indicating that approximately 20% of students are saying they've had any unfortunate experiences around either their racial identity or, or their orientation. And it wasn't clear if that was of the entire school population, that estimated 20%, or if it was percentages of those specific affinity groupings. My guess, it's from 20, about 20% of the entire school population, but it's very important to get data within those specific subsets of students because ultimately our students are going to tell us if we're doing this work well. And their voice needs to be included from top to bottom.
I could start a little bit by talking about the handbook. I'm so glad you brought up student voice because I am going to definitely have, I mean, I thought about bringing the handbook to different student leadership groups at the high school and the, um, the middle school as a starting point. But I do, I just wanted, the chief, the staff really has to buy in to kind of some, to the flow of the work. And sort of the idea of a restorative discipline policy and part of what I've done is a lot of research on other districts that are doing this. For line and like other districts really have these things in place. So it's, I did a lot of research to start and I said, here's what other districts are doing. Like, what do we like? What do we want to change? And that was the starting point. And I do think that we just need the staff, the leaders who are actually going to execute a lot of this to at least like, okay, we buy into this general flow and then get student feedback on more of the kind of, okay, how would we do this? What do you think? Well, you know, and to create more dialogue that way. So that's the first thing. The other thing is that I do, I have a lot of elementary school teachers in my professional development. And so I do go to especially Tucker and Glover because those teachers have just decided to sign up for the optional after-school professional development. I go and I lead circles with them. And anyone who reaches out to me right now, because I am just one person, you know, I can't be everywhere, but any teacher in the entire district who reaches out to me, if they want me to come and model a circle in their classroom, I will be there, like within a week. And I've told people that. So I, you know, I really am at Glover and Tucker a lot because of the, the people taking my professional development, which is great. And then we can actually look at it and practice together in the classroom. Someone I just went to Tucker today doing a circle with a teacher who's in my professional development. She's now going to share what she, how the whole experience was. So I, but I do, so I do think we are expanding opportunities, but we need to. And then just lastly, I want to make sure I say that once we, the focus has been on middle and high. I mean, that really is like my state action plan is to reduce suspensions and I'm accountable for that, we're accountable for that. But my next step, and I, I feel grateful because I have met with all and worked with all the elementary school principals. And I will then, I think it's great to have middle and high first because then we can go to elementary and say, okay, now that you know where this is going, like, how do we, you know, really make the bridge? How do we make sure that this is elementary appropriate? Because we're not going to, there's certain things like vaping that won't be in the elementary school handbook. Not that there are programs, I know, about how to prevent it, but it's just, obviously they'll need to look different. So, so yeah, but I really appreciate all those comments because I just think that those were just really thoughtful, important questions and comments. So thank you.
And things we've been thinking about. We, we talk about this often too, just in regard to making sure that we have common language and that we have some vertical alignment in this work, that's K through 12, and making sure that, you know, when the students arrive at the middle school and I, and Adina and I truly believe if we can actually get a handle on what we want it to look like at the elementary level, we will see huge differences at the middle school and the high school. Because there will be common language, we will have school culture, we will have district-wide culture. That'll be really, really important. That will be a through line.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all that feedback and I guess Dr. Miranda's point earlier around through lines. So it's, it's good to hear that some teachers from Tucker and Glover are opting in. But what are the through lines so that this is comprehensive work that everybody needs to be engaged in and not like an opt-in sort of process?
No, I have thought for more PD time, district-wide. And actually, I, I am in the next half. This is actually just brand new, but I, I feel like I am getting more and more PD time with all the schools. It's happening. There's momentum building. I think with the change in the law, that actually really propelled some more time and work because we have to document what we're doing now. I mean, we are accountable that way. So I think, I'm really glad you're bringing that up though, because it's something that, you know, Claire and I have been talking a lot about. I, I think in some ways I have to say though, for the first year, I'm glad we, I could start a little small because we have piloted some things and we know a lot better what works and what doesn't work. And so now I feel like I could go to district leaders and say, hey, like, I really do want to make sure everyone in the district is trained. I mean, we just, that needs to happen. And we now know a little more about what works and doesn't work at all the grade levels. And we also, in terms of even just circle plans and curriculum, and we now have a bank of Milton public schools, like topics around, you know, lots of different things that, that teachers can share and use with each other. So it doesn't feel like such a heavy lift.
But I also think that, you know, as we think about professional development and our, you know, our district-wide professional development and I'm, Goth and I have talked a lot about PD. We were able to take 13 practitioners to the Metro Directors Association Conference, which was fabulous. That was the first time the district has allowed that many teachers to go to participate in a cultural competency PD, which is really important. So as we think about onboarding new teachers every year, what are we going to do? Do we need to, we need to be intentional about what our professional development looks like so that there is continuity and consistency across the district? So there's a lot of work that we need to do. We, we know that we want to be transparent about that. But I do think we're being intentional about and trying to be thoughtful about how do we do that? There's a lot that has happened before and it seemed like a checkbox, like we've kind of done the one and done. How do we revisit? Because there's been a lot of training for teachers already. How do we revisit some of that work, which we have been doing in small group through instructional leadership time, common planning time, but really some more district-wide kind of PD that's really effective though. Because, you know, we don't just want to offer something for the whole district one day virtually. That's not going to get it what we need to do.
Can I add just one quick piece? Since we have a lot more people watching here on tonight than were at our meeting last week. Just in speaking of alignment and the, the through lines, just so that everybody knows. We've discussed a little bit the school committee's responsibility to put forward a budget that supports this work. Policy is our other key responsibility in addition, of course, to supervising superintendent. And at last week's meeting, we did a first reading of a revised policy on student discipline. So we have the student handbooks at the schools, which are really important, the faculty handbooks. Ultimately, it's district policy that sets sort of what everybody is expected to do. Adina shared the new law. It's our responsibility as a district, of course, to always be updating and staying aligned with state law. And so we had a good kind of collaborative process over several months to actually be in conversation as a policy subcommittee of the school committee with Claire and Adina and Sue Maselli to just try to make sure that our policies are updated. And the student discipline, of course, is key, but that is just one piece. And I think there, it's part of a broader effort to make sure that our policies support our strategic plan, where that means we need updates. But, you know, just to reassure everybody that important stream of work is in process. And we'll be doing a second reading of that policy at next week's meeting. And just to really, from, you know, as the chair of policy subcommittee, to really thank you all again for your partnership on that. And just recognizing the need to make sure that our policies do work for everybody who's actually putting them to practice. So, thank you.
And I believe that that red line policy should be up on our website because it was part of our meeting last week. And, you know, the folks are interested in, in checking that out to see the changes that were made. There were extensive changes and really quite, quite a body of work that was done in the policy subcommittee. And, and I think very reflective of the things that we've been talking about here today.
Sorry, Colleen. Please go ahead. Thank, can everyone hear me okay? Tell us your name and. Oh yeah, sure. Colleen McCarthy, town meeting member, precinct four. I have three children in Cunningham. I've come to all of these meetings. And if you don't mind, I actually prepared something because it's funny. I can get up and give presentations in front of 100 clients, but when it comes to speaking about my children, it can tend to be a little bit emotional. So, and really all children in the district. So, you know, I just, as I mentioned, I have three children in Cunningham. You know, I listened in on the side council presentation the other day. I think we all would be remiss not to state how fantastic and of a presentation Dr. Redden and the team gave there. You know, they've, I think they've done a fabulous job, the teachers as well, really implementing our pillars for some time now. And even without strategic direction and, you know, to be honest, and I think it just speaks to the level of talent that we have in our schools. So I'm very, very happy. And I come here to speak about my children, but I also come here to support our teachers. Because I think what they're doing right now is very, very challenging work in a post-pandemic world where all children, all children have lost, all families have lost. So I just wanted to call out a couple of things. I was really grateful to see that Sue Maselli had joined. I know that there was a CPAC meeting that was scheduled around the same time. I know it's very difficult with calendars. But I really hope that, I want to stress too, that, you know, it's important for the community to hear how children with learning disabilities, all children are being looked at through this lack of equity lens. And specifically, I would like the school committee and the school leadership to speak to how we define equity as it relates to all those children who suffered learning loss and who have had learning differences in our school district. I know at the end of 2020, for example, we identified a need for math interventionists. This budget was that we looked for the, to hire this person and the budget went elsewhere. However, you know, on the heels of comments that were made recently about desperately needing math interventionists in our district, it can't, we can't help but wonder as a community and question how we are prioritizing that inter, early intervention, especially in our elementary schools, especially in a post-pandemic world. And I ask you and I implore you as, as a school committee, you have to explain to the community how we are prioritizing those early intervention needs for all children. And those are not just children on IEPs, those are children that, whose families were not able to hire private tutors because of socioeconomic situations in their homes during the pandemic that many people in the community were able to do. We have to think about those children that are, you know, Betty, you mentioned our SED numbers are rising. Let's catch those kids. Let's prioritize those children. So not only has this led to many in the community to question how our school leadership is prioritizing academic learn and intervention as it relates to equity and education for those children who have learning differences and delays. In my research around equity and education, one important component was cited. Granting students more accesses, granting all students more accesses to the resources that can bolster their education. This does not only apply to those children that have learning differences and learning disabilities, but this should also apply to those high achieving students. We want to keep those children engaged. When we keep those children engaged in our, in our schools and challenged, we make them feel a part of the school committee, community. We don't want to lose those children. We don't, we don't. So we need to think about those children too, and what we can give those children so that they feel part of the community. Can you please cite specific examples of work we have done in this area to make children, to make education more equitable for children who suffered not only learning loss during the pandemic, but those children that are quite frankly bored in the classroom? Those are children that also are at risk. And I ask you to not, not discount them. We're going to lose them as well. We do not want bored children in the classroom. Before you do answer these questions, as we come to the conclusion of this series, and I appreciate you, Dr. Miranda, for talking about accountability measures. But I would really like for you to get into more detail in that with the community. How will you measure your success in all of these areas of the pillars? What are those accountability measures in place to ensure this strategy is working? In five years, my children will be in high school. I don't have time. I want to know now. I really do. And I think members of the community really need to know now. As someone who has worked in business in the private sector for 20 years, and I'm not in academia, I don't know academia, but I'm in the private sector. I think there's many, many of us in Milton that are. I personally can't put for any strategy or sell a client anything without having measurable performance objectives. without having measurable performance objectives and an ROI in place. I can't do it. No one's going to buy it. You are going to ask the town for an override and you're subsequently going to use our tax dollars for this work. And what are tax dollars of, of people that don't have children in the school, our elderly community? You, I am asking you as a parent that you hold yourself accountable to the community and very clearly state the ROI and what data you will use to measure your success. And the entire community needs to agree on this because I think we all agree. The absolute most important objective to all of us, all of us, those members on the school committee that have children here is our children's education and their success in life. I think we all, we all agree. And I think, you know, the pillars, the pillars, I hope work for all. And I, when we think about equity and education and we think about our learning difference, children and those high achievers, I really, really hope we keep, we keep them in mind as well. And I think that this is something that everyone in the community can agree on. So thank you for your time and I apologize, I, I read off, but I wanted to make sure I covered my points. So thank you. And I know I had a couple of questions in there, but, you know, I think I'm really interested to understand, you know, how we're tackling learning loss in the work that we're doing, how we're prioritizing intervention and what are we doing to keep those high achievers engaged? And, and, and really, and, and a part of feeling a part of the school community because they're just important. They're just as important. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I'm, I'm happy to get us started. I mean, I think part of, if you look at our strategic plan, I do think that embedded in it, it really is talking about all students. And you're talking about your, you know, your high achievers and your students who need additional support. That's exactly what we're trying to do. I hear what you're saying in terms of wanting the exact return on investment. I wish that education research was sort of at that level, right? And we could point to study after study. However, we have looked at the data and we've done analysis of a hundred years of data that we looked at, actually, if I remember correctly. In terms of looking, for instance, at the middle school and looking at our tendencies that have been historical of saying, you know what, you kids right here are thrive so much and we're going to put you in this high achieving class and this gifted class because, you know, that's, that's what we're going to do for you. Nothing wrong with that. And I must tell you that fortunately I was labeled gifted at the right time, that that just changed my attitude. It didn't make me learn better. It just changed my attitude. All of a sudden I saw myself as a student who could learn and now I have a PhD. It kind of worked, right? Because my framing was different. I just learned to see myself differently and that was important. But it didn't necessarily help me achieve more. It just, it just told me that I could learn, which was interesting. But what we're trying to do is making sure that all of our students get that message, all of them. All of them know that they have potential to learn and that they will get the supports that they need to thrive and to achieve educationally. So we are holding ourselves to educational measures to go ahead and say, are we being successful? And this is why I wanted to make sure that we understood and we pointed to what data points we're going to look at, right? We're going to look at individual growth, right? Our students, all of our students, are they growing? And we're doing this by actually doing assessments, right? On an ongoing basis and looking at data and making sure that teachers and that our educators get the support that they need to be able to do and meet students where they're at. We're also looking at our students who are learning disabilities. We need to do better by them. Of course we do. But in order to do that, we need to prepare our educators. We also need to invest. And this is what you see. And actually, it's been a sort of, it's been my little soapbox, actually, in every finance committee meeting to say, let, let's not just go and be satisfied with status quo, right? Status quo hasn't worked. So my argument has been, let's go by a need space. Where are the needs? We need a math interventionist at the, at the elementary. Let's pay for it. Let's do it. Let's put it there and let's make it work, right? Because if we don't do it, if we don't invest, we're not going to get that return. I'm with you, right? Like, we need to invest in order to get the return. If we don't, it's not going to happen. So we have been able to use sort of that thinking in terms of the, the, in terms of the budget. And if anything, if you look at our budget, I think anyone can say that our investment in equity right now is low in comparison to everything else. So if anyone's worried, right, that everything's going into something that maybe we have a harder time measuring because it's hard to measure, you know, the progress that we're making against equity. It really is. We don't have these very clear data points. But we are sort of thinking that these conversations have come into it and we are thinking of everyone. The other part that I would say is that universal design learning. That's another thing that we're actually training our educators to make sure that they think about, you know, and that they're able to and that they're equipped to be able to create classrooms that are a lot more dynamic, right? That it's not the way I learned, right? When I learned, it's like, you're getting the same lesson, either you got it or you didn't. And if you didn't, too bad. And if you have a parent that can pay extra, then you're going to be okay. But if you don't have it, then you're not going to be okay, right? So no, that's not the approach we're taking. It's very asset-based. However, I do want to remind us that we're in year one. And I understand the urgency of seeing metrics and we are capturing metrics. Now, we do need to be better and I'm hearing of aligning, right? And showing that through line to the community. We're going to work on that. That's something we are very aware of. Yeah, yeah.
The concern is, we're looking at data on the back end, right? Like, I'm gonna, and, but I also want to know from a proactive, what are we doing? So math is intervention one. You know, do we really have a sense of where our children are reading? Are they reading at grade level? What are we going to do with that data to meet them there on the front end, right? And I think those are the things that we want to think about because everyone, everyone is.
Yeah. And, and I do want to tell us that, go ahead, please, Beth.
Yes, yes.
Your question is about data.
Yep.
In the back of the strategic plan, we will see the metrics. They were shared at a school committee meeting last fall along with the formative and substantive assessment data. So for those of you who are not traditional educators, I mean, MBA by training, formative assessments are data that teachers collect to assess in short periods of time what a child has learned. And if they realize from that assessment that the child has not learned that content, the expectation is that there's a repeat. And that's the idea that you go back to ensure that that student learns what they were meant to learn. So in addition to our teachers regularly doing these assessments with the tools that we've purchased, iReady, Lexia, and there's actually a French version of it also. So that's one way of capturing data. But then there's district-wide pulling assessments, so people at central office can look across school, across classrooms to see our students achieving at specific benchmarks throughout the year. That data was also shared at the school committee meeting last fall. So anyone who wants to know how are we measuring outcomes? Whether it's at a district level, a school level, or what the district goals are according to the strategic plan? It's all online. Everything you're asking for is on the Milton Public Schools website. Go to the school committee page and look for past presentations. It's all there. And if I'm incorrect, please, you know, correct me. I believe we already have two math interventionists. We're looking for a third. So at no point did anyone in the Milton Public Schools say, we have a need, but we're going to ignore it. The first intervention is in the classroom. So if the teacher realizes the child knew something, the expectation is they will be the ones to be the tier one. If then that student needs something more than what the teacher can provide, because in most cases they have twenty-five kids, that's where the intervention is. So please know, I don't believe there's a single teacher in the Milton Public Schools that would say, I have a child that I know has not learned and I will do nothing. That's not who we are. Yeah. And I do think it's important that for people who are unaware, because you're not traditional educators, it's easier to ask the question than to assume the word. We have a lot of well-meaning people who are working very hard. The work is not easy. You don't know what's happening in individual homes that might be interrupting learning. But we also know that we have an obligation to deliver the best education we can of what we try. So at no point is anyone having this grand conspiracy not to bring the resources, but we do need to vote. And one of the things I thank you for is you did show up at those finance committee meetings. And you did hear that we had two interventionists and we needed a third. Vote for it, right? If you really want to see this get any better, we need the votes at the warranty meeting and at town meeting. And last, for gifted students, we were fortunate to have an update on curriculum instruction that McKinley was there and so was Brian Stell. And one of the things we learned is happening, at least on the high school level, is that there's different courses in math based on the capability and interest of the student. So if you want extra math, we now have AP Statistics, AP Calculus AB, Calculus BC. They're launching a pre-calculus AP course, first ever in the country in Milton High School. So we, we have probably more AP classes than any other suburban public school system. We've also made, in fact, we've made a new curriculum and that curriculum offers differentiation. So if you can go beyond the curriculum, the materials are online. If you want to slow down for a child, you can do that too. But it's very valuable that you all know this. So when someone says to you, why is my not, my child not getting this excellent opportunity? You can say, did you put them in the initial class? Because the opportunities are there, but I do think there's mutual responsibility. The teachers might recommend your child to that class, but you can also put the child in your class on your own. We don't have, we don't have a minimum requirement to take these rigorous courses. It's up to the parent, but if you don't know, you can't take advantage of it. So I encourage you to look at the program of studies for the high school and you'll see all this information there. It's online at the Milton Public Schools website. So, with that said, I want to make sure that people leave here knowing that if you have a question or you need more information, the vast majority is available at your fingertips, but if you can't find it, then reach out.
I just, one more comment before I get up. I think that while that information is great, that it's online, I think it would be very helpful as a recommendation to push it out. Push it out to the community. You, what's that?
It was all shared at the school committee.
I'm, I'm saying like, push it out. Whether it's email, there's a lot of people, busy parents, might not have the time to go out. They don't know where to go to look for it. I just a suggestion. I'm not, I go on and look at it, but I don't know if most of the community does. Thank you.
Coming in, one of the things that, you know, keep probably is going to help us think about is sort of how do we communicate better? How do we, you know, I hate to use the word market, but really it's sort of making sure that, that information is getting out in a way that's digestible. I get it. You know, it's not always something that you can quickly sort of take in and understand. So we will, we, we are thinking about that and how we can do a better job. So I hear you.
Thank you. Excuse me, nobody at home can hear you because you're not at a microphone. You can't be heard by the people at home. I'm sorry, if you're not at the table at the microphone. So I'm sorry, just it's, it's not fair to everybody else who's listening. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think that, that's, yeah, we've gone, we've gone long because of the delays at the beginning. But, you know, looking at the time, I think, I think this, this do would be terrific. Thank you. So, welcome.
Megan Walsh, I am a student at Cunningham and a student at Pierce. And in identifying DEI, I feel there is one group that is directly underrepresented. That's our Asian community, particularly this week, Lunar New Year, nothing was done for them. We've had Asian hate, the recent events that have happened last week. And now when you look at these scores, they're decreasing. So grade five, grade eight science, they went down two percent. In grade ten, ELA, they're down six percent. Now, if you read the equity report, they are just as uncomfortable and feel unsafe in the schools as the Latino students. These students, they were the only group that was zero percent that ever had a weapon, brought a weapon to school. They don't have fights at the school and yet nothing is being done to represent the Asian community. And I, how can we be inclusive if we completely disregard a very, very significant demographic in our area? So I just want to know what's going to be done to address the decline in our Asian students' performance? Because this has never happened. And if you look historically and I've gone through the years, that, that they have been the highest performers that we have in our schools and now we see a decrease. That's not good. So if we're going to be inclusive and focus on all of these groups, we need to start engaging the Asian community and figuring out how to do that. So what can we do as a community to address this and, and bring it to the forefront? So they also feel comfortable because in speaking, I, I have a lot of Asian friends in my neighborhood. They don't feel comfortable approaching us or broaching the subject. So I'm, I feel I'm doing it for them right now because they are underrepresented.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Do you know, I want to, now we just indicate in, in regards to, to the data, we, we have viewed the data and there are metrics for that, to address that. So we do, so in the metrics report, it's being addressed how we need to improve that data. Because yes, they're the only subgroup that did decline during. So it, that actually.
All other groups have increased. So, again, the DEI, my company is strong in DEI. I completely support it. But I don't think we've been all, and I really think we need to look at the groups that are now failed. Such as our sped students, our high achieving, everyone. We need, if we have this holistic approach, everyone should feel comfortable and they don't. That's, it's not happening. So we have a lot more work to do to engage everybody.
I think we've tried to be really transparent that we do, this is a marathon, it's not a sprint. We have work to do across the entire district. Every subgroup has been identified in the metrics report and there are goals for every.
But the forums that are taking place in the school are only LBGTQ and Black and Brown.
Hi, I'm at Calicut and Lunar New Year is a long celebration in our school. And all of the students and teachers celebrate it. They bring home the red envelope, last week they brought home the red envelope. And it's like a huge point of celebration because the Asian population is increasing so much in Calicut. And we actually, as a DEI committee, looked at the data this fall and, of course, saw the same data. And we also have, as a committee, have been talking about what we can do to be more inclusive of the ever-increasing, like by the month, population, Asian population in the school. And we've involved staff and students in this as well. We've invited students in to share their traditions and their holidays so that they can feel that they're welcome to be themselves. I know that's not, that's like just the beginning, but it is just, I wouldn't say it's a blanket statement across the district that they're ignored. But I know that every.
There were teachers who were parents who came in and, you know, took time out of their day to teach the, the students about it, but nothing at the middle school and wasn't addressed at all. And that's just sad.
So if I, if I can just add, I think bringing an equity and learning lens to the work allows us to have exactly this conversation. You know, and really be able to say, you know, are we being inclusive of all groups? And let's name it, let's look at the data, disaggregate it and not look just, you know, sort of at the aggregate, but really let's look at subgroups and let's think about it and let's find out what's going on and what's happening. I can tell you that this is the first year that Latinx Heritage Month was recognized in the schools and in the district. But it came, it was prompted by an email that actually my husband wrote because my daughter said, nothing's been said. And she's, you know, half Salvadoran. And so I was like, no, 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 all right, we're, we're going to write an email and we're going to say something, right? And then all of a sudden, she's preparing this big old presentation on her own because she wants everybody to know what pucas are, right? She wants people to know what her favorite food is and why it's so yummy. But I'm, I'm glad that she felt like comfortable and able to do this. But it's something to say that, again, we're near one of our implementation. But it is allowing us to have the hard dialogue of saying, how can we do better? How can we show up for all of our students? So definitely, I think, definitely that's been my experience at the Cunningham. My daughter's taking Mandarin and I love it. And so it's been great. So I, I think we need to just continue to think about how do we continue to make inclusive spaces that is inclusive of all. So.
My company uses the analogy that DEI is like a puzzle and the corner pieces, the borders and all the pieces in them. And the corner pieces, the borders and all the pieces in the middle are essential in order to form that puzzle. So I, I just really think that we need to.
Yeah.
Take a hard look at being really.
Yeah. And Megan, I think one of the other things that I would sort of just say that it's, it's hard to do. But sometimes it's like we get into these conversations, like it's them and us. There's this othering tend, it just happens. It's sort of like this natural human tendency to do. But I think by creating it and lifting it up as something that we're committed to. We're going to be able to have these conversations and say, it's not either or. It's not the pie is only so big, right? It's no, it's like, we need to make sure that we are being equitable on the class.
And just my daughter, she's afraid to call anyone anything. So she doesn't, I'll say, oh, who, who are you talking about? And she clams up because she's afraid that she's going to say something wrong. She doesn't know what to say and that's bad too. I mean, these kids have no clue. They are so afraid of offending someone that they just shut down.
And that's why this work is so important.
Yeah.
So that we have adults that are not dealing with that, right? Adults are like, no, it's good. It's great. I know how to talk to everybody and that's great. But we're, that's the work that we're doing. That's what we're investing in. And I think that's why this work. I think we need to realize that it's all of us together as a community and how critical it is. Because we want adults that actually, you know what, show it, they, they, they're going to do better than us. I just know they are, you know.
One thing, um, I can't tell if you can hear me or not, so I apologize. But this is a start. We're all.
Here in this room together, it's so nice to see so many people. I've been in this room with like three people here before. So to see this. Is a big start. And I think what we can do going forward is have these conversations. I want to hear from you and hear from you. And we might not always agree, but the point is we're. What's so good about all of us in this room is that we care about our children, right? Right? And I have to say, I was at the Pierce players, uh, play this weekend for state fair. And I recognize a few parents here that were also there. And I would like to say, I was so impressed to see Asian kids, my Indian daughter, you know, black and brown students. White students, they were all there and they put on a phenomenal present, uh, like performance and they did it day after day. And it was so impressive and that's what we need to give them opportunity to do is come together, put on a show and it was amazing.
And highlight the positivity.
Yes, absolutely. But this is so great. I am so glad that we're working towards being inclusive. I want to celebrate all holidays. I, my daughter was in a book club the other day. She said, hey. You know, there was a student in the class who didn't know what, where India was, you know? And so it's important, right? I think we should, we should be celebrating Diwali. We should be celebrating holy in the spring. We should be celebrating all of these holidays. And I think we should give parents opportunities to come and volunteer. I think we, there are plenty of opportunities. I know you mentioned, Colleen mentioned Dr. Redden's presentation last week. Their parents coming in and volunteering at the elementary schools. We need to do that in middle school too. They're still our kids, right? We're still involved. Let's give them opportunities. I'm sure parents will come in and volunteer. I'm happy to come in, you know, I will. And I think we need to do more of that. It's, we are still involved. We're still their parents. We want to be involved and we cannot do anything. If all of us don't come together. So thank you.
Got our last question.
My name is Jen Erby Leggett and I live at three twelve Fairmount Ave. And, um, I have a son in college who went to the Milton Public Schools and a non-binary senior who is at the high school. Um, I just wanted to, um, say how unbelievably grateful I am that this, this work is being done. I support it wholeheartedly. I think my experience in Milton has been one where my kids have often come home and said things. That happened in school that, um, were very upsetting to them. That, uh, were the results of unconscious bias by teachers, by policies that didn't work. Um, and, uh. I've often raised those, those voices and those incidents to principals. You know, and it's just been unclear how those things have been responded to in a lot of ways. This is such a great start, I think, and I just want to say. I wholeheartedly support that. If it takes an override to, I mean, we shouldn't be fighting between a math specialist and DEI. So like. Um, that's just absurd. So, um, uh, and. You know, to me, it's the office of equity that would be making sure that Diwali is celebrated and that Asian students' heritage is honored. And so it has to be a bigger office. Um, I've talked to both of you about the work that you've been doing. There has to be more. It can't just be the two of you. And, um, and all your partners. Um, and so I really support any increase in funding for this. It has to be multi-year. It has to be ongoing. And, um, Milton needs this so badly. I'm also a very proud member of the Milton Anti-Racist Coalition. And we also can't just, just count on that group to, to push us forward. Everyone has to get involved in this. Um, the other thing that I wanted to ask is, um, I also hope that there's. That all teachers and all staff in the district are being required to do some anti-bias or learning about unconscious bias. Um, ongoing training because I think it is those small comments that happen that make, uh, um. Black student feel unwelcome or someone who lives with their grandmother or my, um, non-binary teenager who loved going to do that presentation at the middle school. But half the time can't pee at the high school because the non-binary bathrooms are locked because someone's using it for homework or smoking. And, um, I mean, I think again, that's the through line, right? And so if we can expand your, um, hours in the day in the school buildings to have this influence on everybody. Um, then it's just part of the fabric versus like when something terrible happens. And so, um, I, I support that wholeheartedly. I will, you know, I'm, I'm going to try to get on town meeting again and all those other things, but, um, I just want to thank you all for, for this work and like, it's a great start. We got to keep going and we have to do it forever because otherwise we just will not be making any kind of a difference and a difference needs to be made. So thank you.
Thanks. I think that a great, a great statement to end our session on and thank you so much, uh, everyone for coming out tonight. And those at home, thank you for joining us. And, um, please do keep in touch and, um, there'll be multiple steps along the way this spring where we'll need your support and we really hope. We'll see you again. So thank you, everyone. Good night. Thank you.